Let's see, it is November, 10th of November 4th at 7:00 PM. This is the special meeting in committee of the whole for District 96. Kathy, can you call and roll?
Okay, Mr. Bersati?
President.
Mr. Miller?
President.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Here.
Mr. Marhol?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Mearhead?
Here.
And Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Okay, our first item on the agenda is a welcome to Blithe Park by Principal Caserey-Morton.
Good evening, board members, I'm Dr. Ryan Toye, welcome back. It's great to see you at Blithe again. I just want to take a moment to extend a thank you to the Board of Education and our Riverside community for the renovations that were completed on the building over the summer. Our learning spaces are developmentally appropriate and child-centered, and our professional work areas are functional and certainly make sense in all the work that we do each day. So from the students, staff, and myself, just a very sincere thank you. I know you have a lot on your agenda, and Kelly is waiting, so I'm going to hand it back over to Dr. Ryan Toye and to all of you. Thanks again for being here.
Okay, because here. All right, at this time, is there any public comment?
There is Katie Kajewski and Jen Omen.
Good evening. We wanted to just update you on behalf of the Riverside Education Council members. So thank you for giving us this opportunity to share staff updates with you this evening. As metrics in Region 10 and the surrounding counties rise, members of the Riverside Education Council have reached out with questions and concerns. We've heard from people who think that this is the time to pivot to fully remote. We have also heard from people who would like to remain in person as metrics are carefully monitored. We issued a survey in order to gain the perspective of all REC members. The results of our November 1st survey closely mirror the results from the survey we shared prior to the start of the school year. There are currently 196 members of the Riverside Education Council. 192 REC members, which is 52%, are not in favor of continuing with in-person learning. 75 REC members, or 38.3%, are in favor of continuing with in-person learning, and 19 REC members, or 9.7% of membership, did not vote. Recently, Region 10 metrics have gone past the 8% positivity rate and into the 10% positivity rate. This rise, coupled with the increase in positive cases in the school buildings as well as quarantines, causes concern. Another concern goes beyond Region 10, as members of the District 96 community live, work, and shop in other regions. Members of the District 96 community mingle with people coming from regions and towns with a variety of positivity rates every day.
Gatherings for Halloween this past weekend, Thanksgiving, and winter holidays also create questions and concerns. The largest concern is that people will be gathering for the upcoming holidays. What proactive measures can be devised to ensure the return to learn following a holiday best supports teaching and learning, knowing many people will partake in social gatherings? Those in favor of continuing in-person learning cite six-foot distancing and masks as playing a role in their comfort. They feel comfortable continuing at this time because even if a positive case has come into the classroom, it appears as though spread is not occurring within the school environment. Whether in favor of in-person learning or in favor-- (noise) Yeesh, sorry. Try again. Thanks. Whether in favor of in-person learning or in favor of a pivot to fully remote, staff members question what data would cause a shift. After hearing about the 8% metric in August, members thought 8% would cause the district to pivot to fully remote. The suburban Cook County Region 10 positivity rate is 10.9%, which is significantly beyond the 8% metric. Moving forward, what would cause the pivot to fully remote? Is there a percentage of teachers or students either testing positive or in quarantine that would cause a shift? Is there a positivity rate percentage in our region or community that would trigger the switch? Knowing the formula will allow staff members time to prepare for the switch and will add to the ease of transition for children and families. We know health and safety for every member of the District 96 family is a priority during the COVID era, and we thank you for your consideration of these items.
Thank you for that comment. Anything else? I think that we did want to note, we've received a number of emails over the last 24 hours coming in mentioning, in particular, the potential for school closing or potential for reaction to the positivity, rising positivity rates. I think at last count, we had roughly 30 or so of those emails coming in in support of the continuing the hybrid model. I think there was one email that came in that was in favor of going to rotating to fully remote. We weren't sure exactly if those were intended for public comment tonight, but we thought we should mention those as they've been coming in. They were, at last count, they were still coming in as the meeting was getting started here. So I definitely wanted to mention that. Kathy, were there any other emails or anything else? Okay. Well then, at this time, are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
Yeah, I propose that we move the discussion of COVID, the COVID tests, screening tests to the start of the agenda now. Because we have, we have, we have the nurse from District 102, I think Martha has her on the line, is that right?
All right. Would the board members be amenable to that change?
One second, Kelly.
Okay. All right, I guess we're okay with that change.
So Kelly, we're going to start talking about the District 102 possible partnership. So I'm going to go ahead and give just a brief overview of some facts that we've been considering here, and then I know, so I have Kelly Kulata, who is one of the district nurses from District 102. She's on the phone to participate with us from an audio perspective, and here really to answer questions that we might have, right?
Sure, yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I'll give a quick overview, which is more about our process, and then the process of how we got to where we are in terms of considering this, and then, I know you know a lot about the process around the actual saliva testing. So with that, I just wanted to bring everybody kind of up to speed with where we last left off. So the board has talked about this a few times now, but we were offered this partnership possibility with District 102, with LaGrange School District 102. I think people in the area are aware that District 102 actually has a Board of Education member who is on staff at Loyola as a virologist, and has developed this protocol for saliva screening that is a clinically significant result that has proven to be sort of an exact match with COVID positivity. And so it is a surveillance screening that we would potentially offer to all students and all staff. I know District 102 had been waiting, and we had been doing some preliminary planning and thinking just about the overall capacity, both with District 102 and District 96, to engage in this partnership. The board has asked for some additional consideration around what the agreement would be formally, and also the costs associated with that. So again, I think our process for now is for the board to carefully consider what now has been drafted as an intergovernmental agreement between Riverside District 96 and LaGrange School District 102. If tonight there were to be agreement on this intergovernmental agreement, then we would be sending out communication to our parents and our staff as soon as possible, and sharing a consent waiver. So none of this would be mandatory or required, it would be optional, but certainly highly encouraged of our staff and of our students. The sample collection process, Kelly, I think maybe that's something you can give us a little more insight to, and then this would be an ongoing process for the period of time in which District 96 would want to continue in this process. In terms of finances, I have a quick overview, that there is a cost of $11 per test per person, and that is really for District 102 to kind of meet the costs that they have internally. There are also some supplies and material costs. We know that we would need to purchase an additional PCR machine, and I know we had talked about splitting 15,000, but I believe now with three districts participating, it's actually splitting $30,000 three ways. Supplies, materials, vials, containers, labels, label printers. And then we also believe there are still potentially some incidental staffing needs that we would want to consider. It's everything from currying our saliva samples over to District 102. We've heard just even the process of labeling all the vials and making sure that the barcode labels and the student name envelopes all match up, that we would certainly want the board to be open to some consideration of additional staffing, and I would, I know Jim's going to talk about that, or we have that on a slide here in a second, but likely maybe the cost of another para-professional, somewhere between a para-professional and a nurse in terms of the manpower that we're anticipating we may need to add. We're actually looking at sort of within in-house, maybe additional capacity that we have with some of our in-house people already. So with that, I know Jim had pulled together financial considerations, and he can share some of that, if you can see the slide from way down there.
I think so, yeah. So I created three scenarios, and in the blue have the grand total of staff and students. I think it's 1899 or so, and that would be if every student, whether they were hybrid or remote, was tested. So that kind of, using that as a maximum, have $11 per test, that's $20,000, and if we did that 20 weeks, figuring January through the end of May, that would be 417,000. And then assumed we would need a para, or some mix of labor that could help make this happen, but I just used the cost of a para for 20 weeks and added that in. And then two machines, that 15,000, but split three ways, our sure would be 10,000. And then, I don't know, for other materials or other labor that might be needed, I just put another 10,000 in there. So the maximum would be the 482, 452, sorry. So then in the green, the first column there says in-person, so I just want to try the same exercise with using all the staff, that same number for all the staff, but students, it's about 1,144. And then we figured if all of them did it at 100%, and then the last column is if it was 70%. So if it was 100% of the hybrid plus all of the staff, that would be 341,000, but if it's more likely that 70% of that number would do it, go all the way down to the bottom right, and that's about 250,000.
And I think the one thing-- Kelly can jump in on this too, but in talking to District 102, I mean, we keep sort of shifting what exactly it is in terms of capacity and timing, but I would say this week now it's starting to look more favorable that we could jump in quite quickly. You know, some estimates that maybe we could get this up and running in even a week or two. Now, I think that's pretty optimistic, but especially as we think about the increasing positivity, I think there's a greater sense of urgency around this right now. So if we can move more quickly, obviously that does change that bottom-line number, but I think people can kind of make those calculations, or sort of a weekly cost, add more weeks into the, and we don't know how many people will participate, that is a bit of an unknown. I know, and Kelly, help me out here if you have other information, but I know District 105 has recently joined with 102 in doing this testing, and they felt initially their participation was relatively low. I want to say maybe it was around 40%, and it's been increasing very steadily, I think just very steadily, whether it's due to positivity metrics, due to other families saying, "My child doesn't mind doing this, this isn't so hard." You know, again, I don't know exactly what those qualitative reasons might be, but they are definitely seeing increased participation over sort of a short period of time since they started.
That is absolutely correct, and I think the communication about this, I mean, I will tell you, 102's communication, it was, it was a gigantic communication campaign. So, you know, right from the get-go, we did have an immense amount of students and staff on board, and then as the weeks grew, I mean, since we met in school, 8:31, as the weeks grew, it is only, I mean, I'll tell you right now today, I had 15 people sign up. So again, just like you said, the positivity rate in the community is making people do it. Where else can they go to get weekly testing? It can't be done. So, I mean, that's another thing, and it's just another mitigation layer that the school can offer that I think parents are really excited about.
Kelly, do you want to just sort of walk us through kind of process steps for the, a student or staff who's participating?
Sure. It took us a while to get here, but we have it down to a very efficient process now. So by Monday, I have all the saliva kits for that coming week. So on Monday morning, or on Monday, all saliva kits for any staff member who has signed up are put in their mailboxes. We collect seventh and eighth graders on-site. So what that means for us is, at the end of their morning shift or their afternoon shift, they, anybody who has signed a waiver, they will get their kits, their last hour period, then they walk out the back door, and, you know, we have enough space for ready to spread everybody out. They spit in their vials, and they put it into a lab tray, and myself or another nurse gets it over to the lab. Also on Monday, we send home all the saliva kit vials for K through 2, okay? Then on Tuesday, K through 2 kids come back, and the way that works is when the teacher's telling the kids are unpacking, the teacher will say, "As you're taking your coat off, put your backpack away, if you have your saliva sample, put it in this bin," and there's a bin outside each of the classrooms. After tenants who've done a health aid or a nurse will go around and collect all those saliva samples and get them to the lab. Now, we will do this twice a day because we have AM PM. So then on Tuesday, 3rd through 4th kids are sent home, and the same process has happened on Wednesday, 3rd through 4th come back, 5th through 6th kids are sent home, Thursday, 5th and 6th kids come back. Friday is a day that anybody must have missed. You know, we never will say no to saliva, I hate to say those words, but we will collect a sample from anybody, any day. So, you know, if a secondary forgot to hand his in on Tuesday, that doesn't mean we won't take it on Wednesday. There are saliva bins outside every single teacher's classroom, and it's just a small little tray, and they drop it in there, and then we go around and collect them, and we get them to the lab. Now, I don't know how your school is, they only morning shift or afternoon and afternoon and PM shift, but what has worked for us is to make sure that we get the morning shift kids, kids, their samples down to the lab, so they can start working on those. And then they're working on nurses, what those, while they're waiting for the next afternoon shift of saliva to come in, so that the lab is not so overwhelmed.
And is there a timing, Kelly, that you're aware of, assuming District 96 jumps into the partnership, like a time of day you would want them or not want them, or would you want us to follow these same days in grade levels?
I think trying to follow the same days would be great, like for in, like if you can get your morning samples to the lab at the same time we're doing it, which we're getting our morning samples to the lab, say by, you know, around 11:15 at the latest. Again, I don't know what your hours are. And then obviously, our afternoon samples are in the lab by 4 o'clock, the absolute latest.
Yeah, so we're at elementary, we're AM PM, very similar to you, and then our middle school is on a, you know, AB. One group comes Monday, Tuesday, everybody's remote on Wednesday, another group comes Thursday, Friday. They actually leave the building at 1:00 to go home for lunch, and then they finish their day at home remotely. So again, there'd be maybe a little bit of a stagger time for morning students, our middle school students, and then afternoon students, whether we'd--
Yes, but still, if you were under, you know, given at 1:00, you could still get the samples easily over to the lab by 4:00, right?
Yes, yeah, I don't think that would be a problem.
Yeah. So, yes, I mean, I can't say enough about the process and how wonderful it has been to be involved in it, and the amount of people we've caught who are asymptomatic is quite surprising. And I'm just going to go one step further here--
Sure.
--because it's been happening in the last few weeks, just so that you and your board can be aware of. In the last few weeks, how do we actually, the last month, any employee or student who came up clinically significant for COVID on our screener, we always let them know that this warrants getting a diagnostic test. Well, what has happened in the last month or so is, those people have gone to their physician, and the physician has said, "No, I'm not going to give you diagnostic tests. You came up on that, you came up positive on that saliva screener, you're positive. At this point, I'm not going to waste a test on you." So that has, that has been kind of an interesting little caveat to all of this, and we're not making, obviously, we can't make people vote for diagnostic tests, so they are COVID-positive. You know, we also have had a couple of students who didn't have the financial means, so, you know, don't have healthcare, and didn't have the financial means to go get a diagnostic test. So I kind of wanted to just put that out there to you. I don't know if it's because of the increased numbers in the, in the community that that started to happen, I'm not sure what's making, I'm not sure, but I just know that that's happened quite a few times in the last month.
Kelly, can you, thanks for, thanks for enough for being here. Just had a question, you mentioned the increase in positivity in your testing. Could you just tell us how many positives you're seeing in recent weeks, and how many students you're testing?
Did you hear that, Kelly? How many--
Martha, I didn't hear anything.
Okay, I know, we're socially distanced here, it's a little bit complicated. So the question is, how much, how many students of clinic, or students of staff have clinically significant findings have you had in the past few weeks? And then, I'm sorry--
And how many, how many people are getting tested?
And how many people are getting tested, like your percentage of your population?
Oh, easily, I don't have that number right in front of me, but I'm going to say easily over 80% of the population is getting tested, district-wide. And that's, even if you break that down, staff and students. And also, approximately a month and a half ago, we started offering it to remote students. So remote students will come pick up their kits and then drop them off the next day with a sample. As far as how many clinical significant findings, just in the past two days, we have had six. Prior to that, we had six. So we've had a total of 12 significant findings.
And that's, that's 12 out of, out of what number of people were tested, I'm wondering?
So Kelly, I know your--
I'm sorry.
--student population is about double Rs, I think your student population's about 3,000 students. You don't have that many students participating in the testing.
No, we have about, I mean, we only have 3,000, not students in-house, I think we have about 20, over 2,000. But we, I mean, they are running about 500 samples a day. I mean, we definitely have over 80% of the students signed up for it. And that number keeps increasing every single day.
On a different topic, if you'll let me ask another question, and then I certainly want other, the board to answer, ask questions. We've heard some parents express some concern about just COVID anxiety, right? This idea that, you know, kids are hearing about COVID everywhere, obviously it's part of our reality, and does this make students more or less anxious potentially? And I know that's a very qualitative question, but what's your sense about kids, their own concern about taking a test, or having to spit into a tube, you know, just the process around it, kids' feelings and attitudes around it?
Honestly, I mean, because I, as far as the park students, the seventh and eighth graders, I think they're happy. I mean, literally, every Monday, they come out saying, "Thank you, thank you for doing this, thank you, thank you for keeping us safe." I have, we have not had any kids express any type of anxiety at all.
Great.
It has become, just, just like masks, it has become part of the thing, it's part of their life right now.
Are there other questions board members have?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question for them, Kelly. So I just, I heard that she said they started expanding it to remote students, I guess what was the rationale for that, and why did they do that?
What was your rationale for expanding to remote students, Kelly?
That became a quality issue, is what I was told by administration, that if we're offering this in-house, you know, we needed to offer it to them as well. Also, another, from my personal opinion was, the remote students are still hanging out with the in-house students, right? They're still going to the park, or they're still playing basketball, or whatever it is, together. So it made, to me, it made, that's why it made the most sense. That, I mean, honestly, that, to me, that's why it made the most sense.
So for--
Go.
Was there, I don't have another question, I was going to just sort of--
Well, I think there was a question that wasn't answered previously, well, it was asked at the end of the table, so you didn't hear, but I think there was a question that we've had six positive results, do you know quantitatively how many tests have been run to date?
Today wasn't, because we were off yesterday, today was not a collection day, because the kids in our district were off on Tuesday. So when I said six, that was between Monday, what was they today, Wednesday? Monday and Wednesday, Tuesday, yes, that was between Monday, Tuesday. Today, there were a very low amount of tests to run, it was only staff members, and it was only a few that handed it in. It was, I, there probably weren't even 100 samples today because of the fact that the kids were off yesterday and how we hadn't changed the collection. So those six that I mentioned were from Monday night, and then on Tuesday, I actually opened up the lab, and I ran some, a whole bunch, I collected from a whole bunch of kids who made some poor decisions and got together with a positive, another positive student. So a positive came out of that as well.
And I know, Kelly, the main goal is the surveillance, particularly surveillance, obviously asymptomatic students, because students with symptoms shouldn't be in school, not staff or students.
Right.
And I, I know this is not designed to be that COVID diagnostic test, but I've also heard that, you usually mention this group of students that may have socialized around a student that was positive for COVID, whatever the case may be. Like you said, you'll make an extra arrangement to do additional testing.
Yeah, yes.
What about, what about anybody who might say, you know, symptomatic? I've heard that maybe if there's multiple symptoms, you've run a test for somebody, or, you know, again, not the, not the stated general purpose, but, you know, have you made sort of exceptions around that?
Yes, and that's where the test, in my mind, has been most wonderful for our district, because obviously, you know, the symptom list of COVID is very long, okay? When you got little Joey in the health office who's having a runny nose, per IDPA guidelines, he can't be in school. So I will actually do what I call like a nursing evaluation or a nurse assessment over the phone with that parent. Obviously, Joey has to go home, but if there's no unexplained, if there's not an unexplained reason for his runny nose, and then maybe later in the day, he also, you know, I'll follow the parent at the end of the day, he also has a fever, or maybe he developed a cough, yes, I will ask the mom, that, "Could you please come to the next day for saliva kit, for saliva sample?" We, I do that right outside our lab, we are fortunate to have a door, and they will come, and they will knock on the door, I'll give them the kits, they'll spit in it, and I'm able to put that into lab, you know, the lab will know that these are symptomatic cases, just so that they are aware. But yes, I mean, that's one of the things that has been so helpful, because a kiddo with a fever and a runny nose, I mean, I hate, everyone's going to suspect it, right? If he just has a runny nose, and he has allergies, at least we can rule out it being COVID, and he can be in school. Does that make sense? Did I answer that? I mean, did that make sense to you, how we go about doing that?
Yeah, and I appreciate that it's in the, sort of the vein of a nurse assessment overall, I think that's--
Yes, yes, absolutely, it has to be a nurse. You know, we're not just doing it to do it, we're doing it because it's best practice, and we're trying to figure out what's going on with the kiddo.
Do you ask how the staff has responded to the testing, and what kind of rates for the staff participation?
Yeah, tell us about the-- Yeah, tell us about the staff's, uh, sort of general attitude toward the testing and their level of participation.
Uh, we have six schools, uh, five of the schools had an awesome, awesome, um, they're on board with it, let's just say that. In the beginning, they took some talking to, took, um, some talking to over, you know, LCC meetings, you know, leadership committee meetings. And they did not, they do not want to be involved. They don't want to be, you know, collecting saliva. They don't want to be holding the saliva kits or anything like that. That was in the beginning. Now, again, it's part of everyday life. Um, why that fifth school, why that sixth school of ours, that we can't get the staff on board? I, I can't answer that question. I, I have no idea where that's coming from. But I know the five of the six schools were definitely on board with it, as long as they weren't involved in it. Um, and I say that lovingly. You know, they didn't want to be the ones who had to take stuff to the lab or whatever it is. Now they just tell students, place your saliva kit right there in the bin and that's, that's all they have to do. They do hand the kits out and they do that too, without a problem. They do that without a, not a problem at all. You know, the kits are given to them, they hand out. And, and again, most of the teachers are super happy that we have this mitigation, this extra mitigation that we can offer.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Joel.
When, uh, the screening comes back flagged, you send the kids out, the, what is the procedure for letting the kids back into school? Is it just the fourteen days of quarantine? Is there another screening test before you let them back in? How does that work?
Did you hear Joel's?
Okay.
Did you hear that question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I did. So Joey, Joey, it comes back showing clinical significance. First, and what happens first is in the evening, the lab will call me with the barcode, because they don't know who the kiddo is. So they'll call me, the barcode, I look it up, I call the parent and I say just this, your child has shown clinical significance for COVID on the D102 screener. At this time, he's going to have to isolate. I mean, he's positive, so he has to isolate for ten days. Um, and then we go through the list of whether or not he was in close contact with any other individuals in the district and/or if he has any siblings. And then we go through those guidelines of what needs to be done with that. On the tenth day, I will call, um, Joey's mom. I will make sure that Joey's symptom free, that there are no, no fevers, go through the symptoms, and as long as he's symptom free, he can come back to school. When Joey is flagged, an email is sent to the teachers by the nurse. All it says is, this student will be out of, out of school. Return date is dependent upon nurse follow-up. You will receive an email when he or she can return to, to school. When he or she can return to school, I send an email to the teacher saying, so-and-so is cleared to return to in-person instruction.
And Joel, um, thank you, Kelly. Uh, the other one is, how quickly does the result come back?
Whatever the lab gets by four o'clock, I know by that evening. However, there are some nights I know by eight o'clock. There have been some nights I didn't know until ten o'clock. It all depends on how much the lab is running that day. But usually, it's about eight o'clock at night. Then I will get a phone call with the barcode number.
And then do you contact the family that night or the next?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I contact the family that night, because obviously, I do not want that student in school the next day.
Right.
I'm fortunate that I have my district cell phone, cell phone, so I just use my district cell phone, whether I, I need, I need a text or a call.
Any other questions, Wesley?
So, yeah, so on the, the comment around, um, I don't remember the term, nursing judgment or whatever, so now that that's been kind of a topic of debate, since it's not technically a qualified test, like, is that, um, that's best practice? Like which, could you walk us through the best practice? I guess there's a lot, I think there's a lot of confusion. I know I'm a little confused on, you know, what, um, where judgment comes in, where testing comes in, a lot of that kind of stuff. So could you kind of walk us through like how you evaluate that to clear a student, even though they don't have an officially diagnosed test?
Martha, I'm sorry, I.
Yeah, so, um, so Wesley, one of our board members was asking about this nurse assessment with a symptomatic student, uh, because that's been, I think, one of the questions we've had about the, sort of the intention around the testing. I know meant to be more surveillance, catch asymptomatic students. Um, but, but sort of the, the best practice, your, your view as a nurse in terms of how and why you may use it for a symptomatic student and make those determinations. Right, Wesley?
I mean, yeah, I mean, and again, that just comes down to all nursing assessment. I mean, let's go back to little Joey, okay? Little Joey has a runny nose. He has no other symptoms. He's in first grade. What other first grader doesn't have a runny nose at this time? Right? I mean, but according to the guidelines, he can't be in school with a runny nose. So also according to the guidelines, we can use our best practice in other mitigations, such as this, to try to get him back in school. The nursing assessment is me calling the mom, saying, okay, let's go through his medical history. Right now, I have nothing, nothing listed. But he's also in first grade, he's brand new to us. Can you tell me, does he have seasonal allergies? Is he on any allergy, allergy medications? Sometimes I'll get a parent saying, oh, yeah, he's on dosis, I didn't tell you that? No, that, I don't have that listed anywhere. So that, that makes sense to me, why he has a runny nose. So, and however, I'm going to take it one step further, there are several teachers who, obviously, this is not, they're more, right? Teaching kids in the middle of a pandemic. So if they know that I'm doing a nursing assessment and plus one more step, that we're doing this mitigation of this saliva screening, you know, then it's going to make them feel so much more comfortable knowing that this child is back in class with a runny nose. They know I have another nursing assessment and they knew on top of that that I also collected some saliva. So, I mean, that's helpful for everybody involved. It's also helpful for the, for the parent, too, right? I mean, they're, they, they sure are questioning, but they can't get into the pediatrician for another week. And then, so little Joey's just staying at home for weeks? So, and again, that is clear nursing assessment, though. Anytime, I mean, there are some times, in the morning, I'll talk to a parent and then I'll, I'll call them again in the evening, just to make sure there was no progression of symptoms or anything else. And, no, he's outside jumping on the trampoline. So it's just unfortunate that it seems like any, any symptom, right away, you go that route, when there is other stuff going on in the school. I mean, right now, we have a virus running through one of our schools where kids are vomiting left and right. None of those kids have tested positive for COVID, none of them. But there's some type of virus out there right now. Did that help answer that question?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the answer is that, um, I don't know if it makes people feel more comfortable or not, but yes, it answers that.
And that may be something that we have to think about, you know, differently as we get the process started. I know, I'm getting an email. I know that, um, Dr. Tara Tepin, who's one of our parents, and perhaps, uh, Dr. Campbell is also, Dr. Campbell is the board member from District 102 who developed this process. I know he had another commitment tonight. But I'm getting an email that he's on the line and would like to join us, but I'm not exactly sure how to do that. I don't have a contact information for him. Um, Don, I just forward you the email. Do you want to respond to that one and maybe share this phone number?
It depends on whether or not she has three.
Do you need Dr. Campbell's information? Is that what you need?
Yeah, and I don't know, because I did not think he was going to be available tonight. So I'm, I'm a little perplexed.
She doesn't have three.
Um, I, I wonder if I can add him.
Do you want to try to add him?
Yes, let me see if I can do that from my phone.
Okay.
Okay?
And this, yeah, great.
No, I can't do that.
Okay.
I'm very sorry, uh, this is an old phone, so I'm not able to do it from this one. But I have his phone number, if that's helpful.
Um. Can we put him on speaker? I don't have his number.
I do, I have Dr. Campbell's number.
I'm not sure I want to share his number.
I see, I see you're sending.
Yeah.
Yes, you know what? I can do it off of my other phone if I call you guys back. I can do it off of my other phone.
Sure. Okay. And then call, you're going to call back to the same number that called you, which I believe was that, Kathy, was that your phone or was that a district phone? Okay, so, so if we hang up on you, Kelly, then you're going to maybe call us back?
Yes, I'm going to call you back with this number.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Thanks. We'll take a pause here.
I guess we have.
I guess I just have a question, which really, um, which really doesn't pertain to like Kelly X or anything like that. But I guess my question was, I noticed, I was looking at like the costs and just wanted to know about like, do we have like, um, like storage, I guess, for the tubes? Do they come in on Monday? And also like a barcode printer? And are we going to be getting barcodes, things, I mean, barcode scanners as well, too, so that we can track it here? And do we have the software to then match it all up? I guess, have, have, have we considered that?
So we've, our tech teams have connected, the District 102 and our District 96 team, Don Tifano specifically, so maybe Don can answer that. But, but we will do the barcode labeling, but they do the scanning there. I don't, I mean, I know we have to export from our power school to create the barcode labels and I know Don's looked into the process for that.
Yeah.
We can wait, we can wait and know what happens.
Hello?
Yes, you out there? Is he connected?
I don't, it doesn't look like anything's connected here.
Hello?
Hi.
There we go.
Kelly.
Do you have Dr. Campbell with you also?
I do not.
Okay.
Um, he, he is not able to join.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's, yeah, though he had told us that earlier, that he wasn't able to join, so I was perplexed by the email. So thank you for checking. Um, well, while we have Kelly and we should let her go, I know she probably has to collect lab results here yet this evening. So, um, any other questions for Kelly about kind of process steps, nerd, from a nurse's medical perspective?
Just thank her for her time and for the work she's doing on our behalf, I guess.
Kelly, just a, a big thank you to you for your time tonight, but your time in doing this work in District 102. And, um, really special thanks to District 102 to opening this opportunity up to us. So, thank you so much.
Sure. No problem. And please reach out anytime.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, thank you again. Okay. Any additional changes to the agenda?
No, I think Don's going to.
Now, the, um, the, the process of printing the labels is pretty straightforward. Uh, the, uh, it's actually a double label. So you'll have one, two labels will be printed out for every vial. One with just a name, which goes on the outer envelope, and then one with the barcode only that goes on the tube. And that would be done, printed internally and applied internally. And then, as they're distributed, the, um, uh, the student would get the envelope with their name on it, with the, of, of the vial with barcode only. And then that's what they return. And it's, and the, the barcode is, is just a student ID number. That's it.
Yeah, but I guess the, the short answer is you've been working with them, because I know barcodes can be beneficial sometimes.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We're, we're not printing on the vial. We'll put the labels and then apply the.
I know enough about barcodes that you don't ruin it.
So, Dan, I would, I would propose that if the board is, is willing to be finished this topic, rather than coming back to it now, if that's okay with everyone?
Actually, that's like, I thought we were voting for it now, you mean?
Oh, yeah, just finish the entire discussion and vote, rather than coming back to it later. That'd be my proposal.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
I mean, that's what I thought was the plan, so.
So are there just other questions about, I keep turning this off. You know, are there other questions about anything we shared, the process steps internally here, uh, the financial piece? Anything else that we should answer?
I did have two comments. One was about, um, what, I mean, that Kelly said about testing the symptomatic students. And I absolutely understand the attraction of that and how that could be really beneficial if you discover a positive case that way. Uh, I still have some reservations, though, in the set, in the case where if we administer a test to a symptomatic student and the test is negative, because this is not a diagnostic test, it does seem a little bit risky for us to be doing that, because we're not a, a hospital or a clinic. So I think we, we would have to tread very carefully, even, even though it's highly tempting to, to do that for obvious reasons, I think we have to be cautious about that, that one particular aspect.
Unless we create a second layer requiring them to have a proper PCR test with a certain amount of time period?
Something, yeah. I don't know how you do that, but.
That would mitigate.
But we basically have to make it clear, a negative test does not mean anything.
Yeah, that has to, absolutely, you mean?
Yeah.
No. The way I understand it, that was, that you have a student who had a runny nose and they talk to the parent and it is a case of allergies, seasonal allergies, this is just one more layer.
Yeah.
To make sure that the, you know.
Right, I, yeah.
The teacher feels safe. So I don't think it would be, there's no explanation for the runny nose when you gave your test, you know? I still think the student would not be in school with those symptoms anyway, right? Am I understanding?
Right, so symptomatic child should not be in school for any reason, but they can get an alternate diagnosis from a physician. Right, so allergies is the one that, you know. We've also heard recently about a couple cases of strep throat, you know, so there's, there are other things that can make a child ill, particularly this time of year. So, um, I certainly hear what you're saying. I think we have to, you know, step very carefully and maybe we have to really just get started and gain confidence ourselves with the process. Um, one idea is certainly, I, like, as I'm listening, I'm thinking, and I don't want to overinterpret, but this idea of you could take a surveillance-level saliva screening, it, it says you're not COVID, you don't have clinically significant findings that might resemble COVID, you still have to go home. You know, like, this was like, we don't think it's COVID, but we really don't know for sure, because our test doesn't tell us that. You could get another COVID test, you know, three days later or some, because.
You have to go home and you can't assume that you don't have COVID, because the test is not a diagnostic test and it's.
And I think that goes exactly with the communication piece that, you know, I know Kelly was talking about, that it really, which is part of the documentation you have here for us, but the waivers and the letters, that it really does have to be communicated effectively to the population, the staff and the families about what those results do or do not need and how the process works.
Right.
But I think the documentation is very, very good in my opinion.
And, and I think, you know, what I, I've talked to District 102, really since pretty early in the school year here, is that I think like with any process, they've gained confidence. They've gained confidence in their findings, they've gained confidence in their process steps. You know, for us, we're going to be just starting out. Um, I think we have to be, you know, very true to the, the very clear intentions of the process. And then if our, you know, if our nurses want to explore that, but I think we'd have to, Pam, I think we'd have to really talk about what does a, you know, a negative PCR saliva surveillance assessment mean in combination with other nurse assessments? So I think there's still more, more to be figured out there, but, um.
The other, uh, the other comment I would make, and this comes back to what, um, the, we talked about at the beginning with the, the teachers, um, the poll that they were talking about and the concern, is that, um, Michael Mina, the Harvard epidemiologist, who's been pushing these, this testing for the last eight months, he did a study, uh, which was published, um, about a month ago. And, uh, what he showed is that if you test once a week, like we're proposing to do and like 102 is doing, you basically cut the transmission probability in half. So what that means is that if we were doing testing, if you test twice a week, you cut it down by like eighty percent or ninety percent. Just once a week, you cut it in half. So that means if the positive, um, um, the positive rate on test is at ten percent and we're doing the testing, that's more or less equivalent to. and we're doing the testing, that's more or less equivalent to the positivity rate being five percent and us not doing testing. Basically, it gives us a factor of two to work with there, essentially. So something to think about, especially in the context of these higher rates that we're seeing in the community.
Yeah, I think it's absolutely imperative that, and I hope the rest of the board agrees with me, that we try to undergo these mitigation steps for the screening because the rate's at ten point nine percent currently under stress is concerned. We, this is something that's necessary and an acceptable thing for us to try to do to help everyone. So we hope we're on the same page.
Yeah, and I think we probably want to just monitor our numbers too, because honestly, when she said forty percent, I didn't, she was talking about at the beginning. I kind of perked up on that, but the fact that it's up to eighty percent, that, you know, not getting everybody to participate. I mean, you may be doing it nationally, you're not going to get a hundred percent participation, right? But like, at what point are we just throwing money away? And like forty percent feels like it's not really doing a whole lot. So I think just tracking what that looks like as we get into it, and not saying after week one, we only had thirty quid. But, you know, after two months of it, if we're just not getting enough tech, you know, what's the point, I guess? So I don't, I don't think we need to set hard numbers, but if that was just like a running figure that we looked at, you know, once a month or every, every other week, we made every other week do it just as like an ongoing measurement of it, just to make sure that we're actually getting what we're hoping to get out of it. But I agree, I think, you know, like you said, Jeff, I mean, the RAC just made a public comment about being concerned. And, you know, this is, we're doing everything we can, this is one more thing that we can do. And now we're kind of just out of options other than shutting down, which clearly most people don't want. So, yeah, I would agree. I think we should just go forward with it and try it, never stop.
This supports a number of things that we've been talking about. We have an extra level of screening, whatever you want to call it, pick your legal terms. We have the teachers who are concerned about positivity rates. We know that giving an additional level of, not certainty, but the level of understanding, I'm not thinking of the right word here. Really lost my train of thought, so. And although, an additional level of affirmation that we are doing, the most we can do for our families, for our students to prevent and prevent, mitigate with any transmission on the school side of things.
Right.
We know for a fact that, as the nurse said, that people are going out and letting their hybrid kids play with their all-remote kids. So that calls into question a whole bunch of other things about people's behavior. But if we do this on our side, we are adding to the protection we provide for our students and our teachers. And it's, seems like this is a reasonable cost. I mean, you know me, I don't like to spend money without a good reason, but here I think this is, this is a worthwhile effort.
I think it also gives us just the data, if there is spread within the school and we should, you know, it gives you more information to, to direct to an adaptive pause. I think right now, we don't have that information, so this only helps to make sure that we are pausing when we need to be pausing. And, you know, we're in school when we should be in school, yeah.
Just, just today, the Illinois Department of Public Health put out new guidance on school transmission. It was, as you know, two students in the same class in a fourteen day period is considered an outbreak. They just changed their guidance to say five students in the same class within fourteen days would be considered an outbreak. I think one of the other things I heard from them is, as there is more positivity, that it's going to be harder to determine what would be possible in school transmission versus contact outside of the school that could potentially come into the school, that could resemble in-school transmission. And what we really learn, it's because kids trick or treated together, or, you know. So again, this is the challenge. I know this is at the heart of the, the challenge we're hearing from our teachers too, that they are increasingly concerned about just, certainly the metrics, but also what the metrics mean in terms of interactions that are happening outside of school and therefore what's coming into the school. So we know that this has a potential to be another layer that hopefully would, you know, address this before it is, you know, quote unquote, in, in the schools or in the schools at a level which there could be transmission. Although, as you all know, that's something we monitor and pay very, very close attention to. And we have certainly found that masks on, social distancing, good cleaning procedures, hand washing, all the things that, you know, we are required to do despite having to report cases of COVID, and we are not really reporting, thankfully, you know, this in-school transmission issue. But, but we do know that, you know, every district that I'm in communication with is currently reporting more cases. Not of transmission, but just more cases. It's, it's the positivity metric being, being up, so.
Right. I was looking at the, you know, the ADH metrics for determination of school spread, and we were at red substantial levels for four of those areas. Like test positivity, new cases for a hundred thousand, new cases and new cases. And this is a concerning thing because once, you know, like we need our guidance and the standards, the number of cases rises in the community becomes very challenging for schools to prevent transmission because it's so prevalent. How do you, Martha, you're absolutely right. How do you trace, how do you know where it came from? So I'm really, I'm really happy that this is one thing that we can try and do.
And I think just one, you know, moment, I know I'm talking to the leadership team today and talking to them most days. If I can sort of jump on my soapbox for a minute, just again, just sort of a strong message to the community to, you know, to please, please, please practice social distancing, mask wearing, the same hygiene procedures outside of school. That our teachers I know have shared with principals quite regularly, you know, seeing kids socializing, particularly Halloween. We're nervous about Thanksgiving, we're nervous about the holidays. So I know it's hard, it's what we're hearing about, you know, national news, state local, about, you know, pandemic fatigue is, is a real thing. And we just, you know, we are working so hard, as you all know, and, you know, incredible support from the board and the community to stay open for in-person learning. And we, we really need everybody to be working together on that.
I, I just really agree with Martha. I guess I'd like to ask the board here, something that the nurse brought up is, I would like us to sort of consider about, sort of like, do testing, giving the app to test all students, just because the metrics are going up so high? And I do know that, I mean, there are a lot of kids at play. I do think some of the remote, the fully remote kids are pretty sequestered. I know my kids are, and, but I know that's not the case for everyone. And I do think we should maybe consider offering it that, just so we can get a better idea of what is actually going on in our schools. Because there is, once, once they're out of school.
Yeah, I think, I think that makes sense, but I guess my, my, my thought would be that we started in the schools for hybrid students, get that working. You know, see how that all goes, and then once we got that, a smooth system down, then we can, you know, possibly expand it to the other remote spaces.
Yeah, as we get comfortable with that process moving it forward and expanding it, what's happening with 102 did as well, I think that's great. As we're revisiting every few weeks, I think that's part of the conversation.
It is what they did. I know that adding the remote students was a recent decision. I do know that there's a, a true capacity building piece to this, and talking to LaGrange 102, I mean, I think I shared with you early on that I've been over to their science lab, which is now their testing lab. And to describe this as just a very local process, I think it's exciting to be invited to be a partner. It's because we're really geographically linked in terms of the communities. But it is a, and no disrespect, I mean, I have great respect for the process, it is a homegrown process to some degree. I mean, right, this is, as we've talked about, it's not a high-tech lab, they have the appropriate high-tech equipment, but they're doing it in a school building, right? And we're gonna have potentially a custodian driving our saliva vials over there daily. So it's, I don't want to overload them. You know, I want to do it right, I want to do it for the right number of students and staff. But I also, I think we have to kind of move forward and make sure, sort of keep understanding our capacity issues.
I know that when I spoke with the representatives of Illinois, the University of Illinois, they also had the same recommendation that you start with the hybrid students, and then once you get running, then you can extend. But really, they did recommend to start your program out with hybrid and then figure out your processes just because of the, yeah, the capacity. I mean, there's ninety-six vials that can fit in that machine if you're using that size, and there's only some in the samples. But I do agree with the data. They are a maingoing girl. Not all of them, but some are taking extra curriculums together just because that's their only other activity, and we don't know where else they're hanging out, so. So can I make a recommendation, as we're already an hour into this meeting? If we can maybe move forward and vote on this? I know that we have a student achievement presentation that I don't want to be listening to at ten PM. So that's just my recommendation, unless there's any, anything else. I think we're having the same conversation, so.
Yeah.
Do you need to make a motion? Yes, we do, yes. Is there a motion to, that the Board of Education approve the COVID screening partnership with LaGrange School District 102 as presented?
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mrs. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I just have one final remark, which is that if you can't get to doing next week, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah, the next week would be amazing. I agree with Dr. Ellis.
I agree, as soon as possible.
I would agree, and I'm highly concerned about Thanksgiving, so.
Thanksgiving is important.
We need at least get the stuff moving for, to be ready when they come back, that would be.
And I will tell you, I saw a lot of people hanging out on Halloween, and that's, you know, in the holiday season. I'm not gonna say I was. But sometimes getting people close for Halloween.
That was actually one of the thoughts that has now returned to me, so I apologize for that. This is, this is an ideal time to be starting this. We are entering a time when everyone is going to be cooped up because of the weather. And we're looking at these holidays that people want to spend time with each other. And so an extra level of scrutiny at this point is fortuitous.
Yep, agreed. All right, moving on.
Thank you.
Well then, shall we move on to committee reports?
Yes.
Are we gonna stay in the regular order?
Can we go back to, in, in the regular, from, yeah, that would be, my impression, does that make sense?
I'm gonna pass on our student achievement report. It's a little, it was our student achievement report. We normally have this every year, and it's kind of a little bit different now. People just become more coherent, right?
I understand, Sheri, you said it well, but, you know, student achievement should always take center stage in terms of the important work that we share. And I know this year, you know, COVID has kind of taken center stage out of necessity. But I'm just really glad that Angela has this report to share and a lot of important information. And as I say to Angela, I think now daily, you keep your eye on teaching and learning, you know. And, you know, we'll get, we'll get through the crisis together, certainly.
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing this time for me to share our annual student achievement report. We're going to be looking at the 2019, 2020 data. So it's really important to remember that we're looking at last year's data in this report. And that's partly important to remember because this data is going to include the two and a half months of the time that we were in remote learning due to the suspension of in-person instruction. So what we have here first is our demographic profile for last school year, for the 2019, 2020 school year. And this just paints a picture of who the students are that were producing this data. Our enrollment has been about the same for the past few years, as have our racial demographics. You'll see here that the third box on this demographic profile, which is pulled from the state or the school report card, is gifted students. And I'll talk a bit later about why there's no data for gifted students on this profile. Our low-income students are also about the same. Our students with IEPs have slightly decreased over the past few years. Our English learners population is about the same. And then here you have our student attendance, which has slightly increased. Our student mobility, our chronic absenteeism, and our chronically truant students. And what you'll see here, and you'll see throughout the school report card this year, are the, is the indicator that those last four pieces of data were possibly impacted by COVID-19 due to the suspension of in-person instruction. So the suspension of in-person instruction during the spring may have affected the results of those items on the profile. Every year when we talk about our assessment, our student achievement, we look at our assessment portfolio, which consists of our MTSS work, our multi-tiered systems of supports, our MAP assessments, our climate and culture data, our state assessments, and our school report card. This year, however, we won't be discussing our climate and culture data because data was not compiled for the schools across the state because of the suspension of in-person learning. Because of the suspension of in-person learning, not all schools were able to complete the climate survey. So the state did not want the data skewed, and therefore no Five Essentials data was released. We also won't be discussing state assessments. The Illinois Assessment of Readiness, the Illinois Science Assessment, and the Dynamic Learning Maps Assessment were not taken because of the state waiver with the suspension of in-person learning. But we are going to start with our multi-tiered system of supports. We're starting with our MTSS data because as an administrative team, we look at how our students are responding to the curriculum and to the supports and the enrichment that we provide to our students. When we look at our multi-tiered system of supports, we're looking at several pieces of data. So we're looking at MAP data, FastBridge, Fuentes and Pennel reading data, just to name a few. And we use these pieces of data to determine which students are located in these different tiers. So MTSS has three tiers, and we've talked about this over the different years. Tier one are for those students who are able to successfully master the content in the regular classroom setting. They might use general accommodations that are planned for by their teacher, but those are general accommodations for all students. So students at tier one can master the content in the classroom with or without those general accommodations. You want your population of students to be about eighty percent, research has shown, at tier one or more, eighty percent or more. Tier two are for those students who receive extra support or extra challenge in the small group setting. And that's what assists them with either challenging them further with content or supporting them so that they're able to master the content that the tier one students are mastering in the classroom. Research has shown that that tier is usually about twelve to fifteen percent of your student population, no more than that. And then tier three are the groups of students who may need more intensive interventions, maybe one-on-one, maybe more frequently, for longer durations of time. And that should be no more than five percent of your population. As an administrative team, along with our staff members, we regularly monitor our tier one, tier two, and tier three students to ensure that our curriculum, our interventions and our supports are meeting our students' needs. One of the things that we would look for is if we have lower percentages of tier one students, that would signal that something is not right within the classroom setting and the curriculum there, and that we might want to review our curriculum. So I explain all that as a precursor to the data I'm going to show you about our MTSS supports. So what we're looking at here is reading MTSS, we're looking at the percentage of enrollment of our students. So remembering that tier one, we want to be at least eighty percent. Tier two, we want to be no more than twelve to fifteen percent. And tier three, we want to be no more than five percent. And we're looking at a fall-to-fall comparison. In normal times, we would have looked at fall to spring, we would have seen, we would have looked at how the numbers moved from tier two to tier three, or out of tier three, out of tier two to tier one. Where we started in the fall, where we went in the winter, where we were in the spring. But because we don't have the spring data due to that suspension of in-person learning, we're looking at fall-to-fall for much of the data in this report tonight. And this will help us see where we were in the winter, right before our students left, and where we are now as our students return. So in the fall of 2019, you see for reading at the elementary level, we have five and eight tenths percent that were in tier two and four and seven tenths percent that were in tier three services. Winter, you see the numbers have gone up slightly, not a lot. And then now in fall, over the course of that suspended in-person learning, our numbers are about the same, with just a slight increase. Our junior high students, tier two for the fall, one and a half percent. Tier three, one and four tenths percent. In the winter, you can see there was a slight decline. And then for fall, it says to be determined. And the reason it says that is because our junior high just recently finished our MAP testing last week. And so, while we're happy that the data is there for us to be able to present it to you tonight, we're still working as a team of administrators and teachers to hold data meetings, to look at where our junior high students are at, to determine what their needs are, and then to place them in tier one, tier two, or tier three services. This is for math. Again, looking fall-to-fall, looking at the percentage of total student enrollment. For math in the fall, five and a half percent were in tier two, fall of 2019. Four and three tenths percent were in tier three. Then you can see there's an increase at tier two and a decrease at tier three. One of the things we look at as administrators when that happens is, is that decrease at tier three and the increase at tier two? Is that increase because the tier three students are moving out of that intensive support and more into that small group support? How many of those students? We will look and dig into that data to see how many of those students, who are those students, that were moving into tier two? Were they coming from tier one to tier two, or from tier three to tier two? So it's great that the tier three number is lower, and it's not really that alarming that the tier two number has gone up like that. And then you can see where we're at from winter of 2020 to now. You can see that we're at four and seven tenths percent in tier two services and five and six tenths percent at tier three, which is about where we usually are in the fall. You look at junior high, you see where we started last fall, where we went to in the winter, and then as I explained, we're still working on our data meetings now. So now we'll talk about MAP testing. Again, usually for MAP testing, we would look at a spring-to-spring comparison so that we could see the impact of the instruction from that previous year. But because we don't have spring assessments, we're going to look at fall-to-fall so that we can see where our students are currently at, and we can plan for instruction with the students in front of us. So the first graph that you see here is looking at a fall-to-fall cohort of data. And what you're looking at here is the median percentile in reading for each grade level from fall 2018 to fall 2019 to fall 2020. And to explain further what you're looking at, if you look at the orange line, our current fourth graders. In the fall of 2018, when they were second graders, their median score was, and that's actually their mean score, their average score, was 178 and three tenths, which equates to the 82nd percentile. A year later, when they were in third grade, that cohort averaged a score of 193 and nine tenths, which equates to the 84th percentile. This fall, the same cohort, our fourth graders, averaged a score of 207 and seven tenths, which was the 94th percentile. So you're able to see where cohorts were, cohorts were at for fall of 2018, 2019, and 2020. Studies are not able to show quite yet the complete impact of the COVID regression, along with the summer regression. But there have been studies that have been started that show us trends, expected trends, due to the suspension of in-person instruction. NWA MAP has a study on the expected trends. And there are other studies that have been based off of the suspension of learning during the aftermath of Hurricane Katrina. And what those studies are predicting was that COVID-19 regression, along with summer regression, would cause a decrease in scores in both reading and math, with larger decreases in math. What you can see here with our reading scores is that we do not follow this trend. I've also been talking with the other RB feeder districts, and they also noticed that their reading scores did not dip significantly. When we look at the average growth versus the anticipated growth from fall 2019 to fall 2020, 62% of our students met their growth targets. And this is compared to 61% last year meeting their growth targets. And what this graph is showing you is, where the arrow is, that was the projected growth points for those students, and the bar shows you the actual observed growth. And from that bar graph, you can see that we were at or exceeded that projected growth. So now let's talk about math. With math, we have the same type of graph where we're looking at fall 2018 to fall 2019 to fall 2020. And again, using our fourth graders, the mean fall score in 2018 was 181 and seven tenths, which equates to the 87th percentile. As third graders, a year later, the average score was 195 and two tenths, which was at the 87th percentile. And then this fall, that same cohort, averaged a score of 207 and eight tenths, which was the 89th percentile. Here you see that math does follow the expected trends from the NWA study and the Hurricane Katrina studies. It's also important to note that as an administrative team, we are exploring our next steps, given the regression of our student scores. These next steps include how to increase mathematics instruction within the time constraints of our schedule. I want to remind you, we just received this data as recently as last week, and so we're still continuing as a team to dig into the data and to look at the individual students and to make plans for our individual students. But our initial discussions include, we plan to meet with grade-level teams to review deficit areas on the assessments and ensure that our priority standards align with these deficit areas. We're just digging into the capabilities of DreamBox. We have a professional development with DreamBox on Monday, where we'll learn more about assigning specific practice based on MAP RIT scores for individual intervention plans for students to follow. We will also explore assigning individual students to staff members for individual check-ins around math, as well as other subjects of need, to look at homework, grades, academic assistance that's needed, and to provide another support to these students that are demonstrating the need. And we will continue to monitor the scores of students specifically at our winter benchmarking time. And if we're not seeing the gains we need to see, we will continue to reevaluate how we are meeting our students' needs, and that could include a review and possible adjustment of our scheduling. When we look at our MAP average growth versus anticipated growth, it paints a similar picture as the last graph. You can see that two-thirds of our grades that were assessed are below their projected growth. And so, as I said, we are continuing to look at the deficit areas, the individual students, and how we will plan for instruction. Let's talk about the school report card next. Our school report card is more than testing scores and summative designations. That's often what we focus on when we have those scores, and we share a lot about the data, the assessment data. But it's important to note that when you access our school report card online, you actually see a lot of information. ISBE releases data on how the state, districts throughout the state, and all schools in the state are doing on a wide range of educational goals. The goal of the state report card is to inform and empower our families and our communities to best support their schools. So tonight, because we aren't looking at assessment data, we want to walk through really briefly the three components of the school report card, or three of the components of the school report card. The one that we all know about is the academic progress, which is comprised of these different assessments, the IAR, the DLM, the ISA, looking at growth on the IAR, participa, participation, participation. I don't know why I'm struggling with that word, but you know what I mean. The assessment performance scatter plots and our achievement gap. And as we know, all of these were impacted by COVID-19, so there are no scores for the academic progress this year on the school report card. The district environment is another component of the school report card. The district environment is made up of the climate survey, we use the Five Essentials. Early learning this year is a new metric that will be used on the school report card moving forward. And what early learning is showing us, when you access that, is the percentage of entering kindergartners rated on their readiness in three domains. Those domains being social-emotional development, language and literacy development, and math cognition. And this is as assessed on the Kindergarten Individual Development Survey. The kids' survey is administered by our kindergarten teachers in the fall, so that data was not impacted by COVID-19. And you would see, you will see on the school report card the percentage of our kindergartners who were able to, or who showed readiness in those three domains. The early learning assessment is showing us where all of our kindergartners are at. So it's showing us the result of a variety of early learning programs, not just District 96's early learning program. You'll also see site-based expenditures, district finances, average class size, total school days, and health and wellness. Health and wellness shows us the average number of days of physical education per week per student. And the total school days and health and wellness were possibly impacted due to COVID-19. And then you have student data, which was a profile chart that I showed at the beginning of our, of this presentation. And I had said that I would hit on the gifted students. So gifted students are not reported on our school report card this year. And they're not reported because gifted students are identified by the district, and we didn't identify gifted students. We don't normally identify gifted students here in District 96. We identify students for advanced learning to ensure that we're challenging all students appropriately. What the district, or what the state is looking for is for identification of the number of students assessed for giftedness, the number of students identified as gifted, the number of students assessed for giftedness who are taught by a gifted-endorsed teacher, the number of students identified as gifted, or, and then they're also looking for the district's gifted assessment and academic program policy. Because we don't identify gifted students, I'm still working with the state on how they would like us to identify this in our student information system so that we will have data for next year. And then those four indicators we talked about earlier were also possibly indicated, those last four indicators were possibly impacted due to COVID-19. The school report card also includes a couple of other new metrics, but these will not be on District 96's school report cards because they don't impact us. The Illinois Youth Survey Participation is reported for school districts that opted in to providing a self-reported survey, which is designed to gather information about a variety of health and social indicators, including substance use patterns and attitudes of Illinois youth. We acted out of giving that survey to our students. And then school improvement funds are Title I school improvement funds that are allocated to districts for schools designated as targeted or comprehensive to support their school improvement. And we have no schools that are designated that way, so we don't receive those funds. Our summative designations are reported on this year's school report card, come from 2019 because we weren't able to calculate summative designations for 2020 because we're missing so much of the data that fuels that system. The approved SAA waiver, allowing the waiver of the 2019 assessments, did require the state though to still, it did require the state to issue summative designations, so they are reissuing the 2019 designations, which were these designations. So what are our next steps after looking at these pieces of our assessment portfolio? We plan to review supports that our students need and schedule supports for our students in the area of mathematics specifically, but also looking at reading. We will further explore the mathematics curriculum to make sure it really is meeting the tier one need. We're going to review all data to determine areas of focus for both mathematics and reading in relation to our primary standards. And we're going to continue vertical alignment of instruction. We're also going to continue to dig into the data that we have, exploring which students aren't growing as they should, as well as which students are growing but still not achieving at grade level. And with that, I open it up for any questions.
Normally on maps, if you look at Slides 11 through 13, talking about the map data, normally there's this sixth-grade lag because of the structure of the map test and the way it's administered. It's a huge curriculum jump for them from fifth to sixth grade. Anyway, there's something about the testing, the way it's written, that it's not just us, but a lot of districts have this sixth-grade issue. But what I'm noticing is, what you talk about, the extremely significant dip in sixth grade compared to the other grades that we experienced in 19.
So you're absolutely right about the platform testing change between fifth grade and sixth grade. And even when talking with the representative from NWA MAP earlier, last, or late last week, she had acknowledged the same thing, that the platform for math, when you begin in sixth grade, the math testing, it does bring on harder questions. But yes, that doesn't necessarily explain the greater dip at sixth grade. And that's something that Ms. May and Mr. Harvales and I have been meeting and talking about. But because we did just receive the data, we're still looking into that. Mr. Harvales has put together a chart where we're looking at the difference in the growth projection and the achievement that students had performed so that we can see which students are furthest away from meeting their growth targets, to which ones were just slightly away. So we are looking into that as well. I'm working on triangulating the data to see how does that match up with the engagement during the spring to see if some of that might be from, you know, we weren't always taking attendance. We didn't start taking attendance until April, and so we had some students who weren't engaged. We weren't teaching new content right away. So how did what we were instructing in the spring impact the scores also? So because we just received the data, these are all things that we're still working on trying to explain.
Is there any difference in the sixth-grade math content topics from 2019 to 2018, the year before? It's changed in any way?
I don't believe there is. I think it was the same assessment.
Do we have any idea of those, maybe there's particular areas in mathematics in sixth grade that maybe it's a certain piece that they just didn't understand content-wise? That we have a gap in our instruction? Do we know?
That's part of what we're still looking at too, are the difference, so on math, math, or in all the math tests, they're divided up into subtopics.
Yeah, I was wondering.
So we're going to, we can look at that, we are going to look at that to determine where, which topics are the ones that are the most struggle, and that's part of that aligning with priority standards to see if we need to shift what we plan to instruct.
Right, it'd be interesting to know if it was just one or two topics, if it was across the board, and if we have a different issue than just a simple gap in instruction. Because this is significant compared to the other grade. I mean, we definitely had lags in the other grade as well, but that one is.
In the sixth grade, I think we've seen that every single year since I've been reporting. I am reasonably convinced it's not, of course, I'd like to be corrected for the wrong, but I'm pretty sure it's not us. All the high-performing districts have exactly the same behavior. And I think it's because NWA does not normalize the test correctly. Because they're giving two different tests, you have to somehow normalize the test to compare scores. But because the scores are a distribution, there's a distribution of scores in both tests, you can't use a single number to, so the shape of the distribution will vary from one test to the other. You can't use a single number, like the average, to basically normalize. And that, I think that has the consequence of the way they do it is that high-performing students, my guess is, high-performing students, high-performing districts will show the worst growth. But I think that's totally, I think, I'd like to know the answer, but I think it's just that it's a mistake when NWA normalizes their test. That's my guess, because we see it all the time.
Because we don't see the same thing in reading for sixth grade at all, it's very different picture. So, yeah, that would be really interesting to hear about.
So when talking to Heather Sala from NWA MAP, she did say that that is a normal trend among districts, that it is not just us, it is something they see across the board.
Especially, I think, it's high-performing districts. And I think there was actually a paper on MAP's website, or on NWA's website a couple of years ago that they actually talked about, in a very, kind of obtuse language, very hard to understand because deliberately, but I think the meat of it was essentially that, it was not, they're not normalizing the test, or they didn't, couldn't figure out how to normalize the test properly. But that was my, that was just my read of it, so maybe you guys will figure it out and figure out. But I, at first I used to be concerned about it, but I'm no longer concerned about it.
No, I wasn't concerned. I was just curious. I was like, this is every year, it's the same issue. I'm wondering what communication can we give to them and what can we do for our, for our own staff, just to help them figure out what is it that we tweak, or if anything.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask a similar question, but you kind of hit on it actually, or an expansion of that question, but you kind of hit on it through that. But I was just curious, like, were there any initial thoughts? I know you said you just got the data, but any initial thoughts on like, why math dropped, but reading didn't, like, either kind of stayed the same or went up? I thought that was interesting. I've got a hypothesis, but.
I thought it was interesting as well, and in conversations both with Heather Sala with NWA MAP and with the, my counterparts in 95 and in 94, what we're thinking is probably happening is that when we have the suspension of in-person learning, reading is easier to help your students with. Reading is also something where you get better when you do it. And you might have miscue errors, but at upper grades, it really is about reading for comprehension and fluency, and less about the phonics piece of it and sounding out words. So reading is something that's easier to continue to grow on when compared to math. Where math, during the suspension of in-person learning, it's harder for parents to assist their students with math. And then when we weren't teaching new concepts right at the beginning of the suspension of in-person learning, then our students weren't necessarily growing from there. And then you add on top of that, we were doing this remote learning five days a week, which was new for everybody, trying to teach new math concepts, and we got to that point. And again, it's hard for parents to help their students with that. So we're noticing across the three districts, and then talking with Heather too, she's noticing that trend just among districts that take math, that we really think that that might play a role in it.
I'll start, but I was gonna say, they're also like using, like, again, Mr. Harvallis, five years ago, and they were using manipulatives in sixth grade, things that they could physically move around, that they just can't do in remote learning, to kind of picture transfer, you know, even variables, and see them do the math, talk to someone else right next to you, as opposed to, and do call it, you know, if we're even able to do that at that point. So I totally understand how it, and mom and dad, and grandma, or whoever else is at home, you know, trying to figure out what to do with that. Thank you. That's a good question.
And that's kind of what I sort of assumed, just based on my own experience in talking to other people, it was very similar. You know, I make my kids read every day. I don't think I'm doing math worksheets every day. And so I'm kind of actually rethinking that, not to hit them too hard, but like, maybe I should. But that, yeah, that kind of aligns with what I was thinking. I didn't know if there was something deeper than just that, but.
Not that, we've come up with yet.
We should be doing bedtime math.
Right.
There is.
I do end it though with my wife, yes. It also becomes the interest in the habit, like the nighttime story. Thank you. You explained that really well.
Well, I will also, the math is tricky too, because I know some of it I do remember from being a kid. And like, some of like the 10 blocks, as I got younger, and stuff like the 10 blocks and things. But some of it, you know, thankfully they're not going to be free, because I don't know how I would try to learn the new way of doing the same thing I did in a different way. Like, I gotta learn how to do it to teach them to work like, the way they're learning, not just the way I know it too. So that's an added stressor for parents. I know it's like, okay, I know how to do this, I just don't know how to do it. How do you get me taught? It's like, yeah.
Any other questions for Angela?
I was wondering, we talked a lot about the downward trends for the math. I think there were, what, third and fourth grade went remarkably up on the reading. I'm wondering, is that anything indicative of, of anything? Do we have any thoughts on why that bump is happening?
I haven't dug into that as deeply yet. I want to look at the individual students. Again, looking at what was going on during the spring as well, with instruction, as well as with the individual student participation. But I haven't figured out yet that one.
That's not a normal thing, a bump that we would see in the test or anything attributed to the past year.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
If there's no other questions, we'll pass now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, next is the facilities committee.
Thanks, Dan. The committee met. Linda and I, and the administration, the architect, and Ramesh met last week. And we are continuing to discuss various options specific to Central and Hauser, and looking to see what is, what is truly necessary to make the space behind the buildings usable for essentially all-weather play. Because the biggest obstacle right now is the fact that the landscaped, grassy area by the ball field is, becomes unusable very quickly in the fall and in the spring due to the weather. So we are looking at cost-effective ways to meet our goals. It's a challenge. With Blythe Park, I missed part of this discussion, but the architect is continuing to look at options with regards to working with the village, and rather than reconfiguring the parking lot in any significant way. With regards to Hauser Auditorium, again, we're looking at our options and trying to vet and look at high, medium, low options, and what would really be appropriate for improvements, as we heard last week, and actually at our last committee of the whole. The equipment out there is old, it's becoming unmaintainable, and some work needs to be done to replace it, but the real question becomes how much? And as you know, we've been in discussion with the zoo, and we're working forward, working towards additional Hollywood work. What else did I miss?
I think that's everything. I think the most pressing issue is around Hollywood and making sure that we're getting everything done, so that we go out to bid at the right time to have this as a summer 2021 project. So I know there's some conversation about backing up to that date that they were working on. And I'm assuming that's why a lot of these attachments are there, just to kind of remind everybody of that project, and that that is still moving forward.
Martha, I'm not trying to put you on the spot here, wasn't there a future meeting or village meeting that's coming up?
Yes.
With the Village of Brookfield, because, sorry, as everyone knows, there's a permitting and approvals process that needs to happen with the local municipality, because they also get a say in what happens in their jurisdiction.
Right, so I chose, I was scheduled to attend a Brookfield Village meeting on Monday night at nine. They've actually asked to postpone that to their November meeting, and I believe that's November 23rd, that, that week of November, because they want to do some of their own analysis in terms of looking at the pickup and drop off and street configurations right now around Hollywood School. But as you know, our request is going to be for some street parking spots that would kind of round out our parking requirements in combination with the zoo, some on-sites parking, and then in hopes of getting some street parking. So I don't think that this is a delay in sort of their interest in working with us. I think it's really a genuine, you know, need to gather some more information and then just postponing when I would go to the village board meeting. So that is part of why we wanted to make sure that the board and the community had sort of all those plans that have been kind of in process and in development to look at now, because those will essentially be the things that we'd be sharing with the Village of Brookfield.
And then probably the most fun thing was the fact that the Ames River cutting has been delayed due to our current virus conditions, so disappointing, but.
Did you say the most fun?
That would have been the most fun event.
Oh, I thought you meant the most fun is that we decided to delay it.
No, no, there was fun for facilities.
And the plan is to try to do that in the spring when the weather's nicer and hopefully virus metrics are lower. So we still plan to do that. But I did want to also mention, I think we talked about it before, the videos of the schools. I think that's been shared out.
Yeah.
So I think that's a really great way for the community to be able to see the improvements that have been done. RBTV did a really good job, or, did I say the wrong way?
Yeah, they did.
Was it RBTV and the Village of, I'm not sure, the entity now?
Just Riverside.
Oh, just Riverside. I thought I said it wrong.
I think I say RB too, Riverside TV.
Yes, Riverside TV, my bad.
We put those on our website, and I know, I think principals are sharing those in principal newsletters just as a way to highlight what's going on. I know people have been eager to come into the buildings, and we're, we're careful about that, as you know, and not wanting to do anything to increase extra virus exposure.
I know it sounds multi-purpose room there, but the playground design that's on here, I assume that's the same one that we came out of the committee with, we just haven't gotten to the end of the village yet. So now we're just going, everything's the same now, we're finally just got people to go ahead and go through the village process, and the permitting, selling all that kind of stuff, whatever.
Yes, I think we'd like to re-convene the playground committee just to take one more look. We had done that with Ames too, just to have the committee as, especially as we get closer to working with a specific vendor. So when that process gets moving, and first we want to tighten up the parking agreement so that we know that we have sort of clarity to move forward with the playground.
So I have a couple of questions. First of all, I appreciate the committee for doing the work they're doing, Joel and Martha, the rest of the committee. One of the things Ramesh said at our last meeting concerned me a big deal, which he mentioned that the cost for the Hollywood addition, that small, small 1,000 square foot multi-purpose room, initially had been a million dollars, something like a million dollars, which is already very expensive, is a thousand dollars per square foot. He said he anticipated it might be twice that, $2 million.
Fifty percent more.
Yeah, I thought you said $2 million. And if that, yeah, yeah, we'll, yeah, a hundred percent more. It's, so at that price, I'm talking about $2 million for a small addition like that, I think that's something that, if it comes in near that, I'm going to have some reservations about, about that cost. So something to think about. Obviously, we won't know until we get a quote, I suppose. But if that estimate is correct, I think we really have to think long and hard about that. And then the other question I guess I have is, I know that the Lakota group has been working on designs for the Central Hauser parking lot, playground, so forth. But to my recollection, I don't know if the board, and correct me if I'm wrong, if the board has had a chance to discuss anything they've sort of come up with yet as a board. Have we, have we talked about that at all, or? I mean, we planned it a couple of months ago. Okay, so I think that's something that if we're talking about doing it for next, I don't know what the plan is, talking about doing it for next summer, I think we'd be good if we had an opportunity for input, so we could sort of say we like this, we don't like that, go back, and, you know, we're kind of, I know it's, because of the COVID, I know it's very hard to plan these things and, you know, get things on the schedule. But if the plan is still to do something for the summer of 2021, it'd be really good, I think, if the board had, you know, had an opportunity to look at it and have some input, so. Again, it's totally out of your control in a way, but just want to.
The, we did see, the facilities did see some plans. The costs were prohibitive at this point, and so that is part of the discussion about, and that's kind of what I was alluding to, is really trying to drill down, as they say, and figure out what exactly would be appropriate to move forward with. And trying to assess whether or not there's some kind of a staged option to spread costs out. The total dollar value was a little surprising, and so we're having them look at and refine their thoughts to something that's more reasonable. Sticker shock is the summary word.
So Jeff, you're absolutely right that it was our goal to bring some design ideas to the board, and just looking at preliminary design ideas, Ramesh did some cost estimating, exactly as Joel just said, sort of cost well beyond anything we had kind of anticipated or imagined. I'm certainly reminded that this doesn't all have to happen as one, you know, one-stage, a one-stage project. It could be a multi-year project. But we've had conversations with April, and with Chris, and with Pete Gatz, and with them, really just trying to say like, what are the priorities here if we have to pare this down some? So we are very interested in bringing it forward, but we want to make sure that we're not bringing something that would sort of be of great interest and then feel like it's just not feasible.
I appreciate that. I mean, to me, one priority, I think, has to be the Central Playground, because Central's always had the worst playground. And now we're gonna, we've got a beautiful playground at Ames, we're gonna have a nice winter Hollywood. Blythe has always had a nice playground, so it really, you know, we have to have a playground at Central. That's like, that to me, it's like, that's a high priority. So the other stuff, I'm not sure how high priority is, but certainly a central playground, I think we have to do that, so. But this might, two cents on that.
And that's very fair. I think the, as I said earlier, the biggest concern right now is that portions of that back lot become unusable where there are grass. It's a mud pit, and so it ends up being, the kids just stay inside when the weather starts to turn, because there's no place to go. Your choice is play among the cows, be in the mud pit, or be inside. And that ends up being a fairly easy decision to be inside, but the playground is equally.
And one of the core ideas that we're trying to work with is the idea of building a playground on the back, in that, in that back area, if there's a way to consolidate parking. We know the primary goal is really safety and separating play and parking, but then, right, to get a better playground, a more age-appropriate playground for Central, and then better field space for, better, more frequently usable field space for both Hauser and Central, but we know that that's used heavily by Hauser PE. So I think the people, the team that's been sort of taking a look at, they have been clear about some goals, but just, you know, what, how do we do it in a somewhat cost-effective way?
Yeah, and I think we did share that present, um, did the board get the?
I think you sent something out, but I don't think you did.
Months, months ago, like maybe spring.
Right, right, right. No, because what I was going to add to it is, the, when we first started this conversation, what, a year ago, the preferred design, which really alters the entire back, which completely moves parking, you know, like, is a huge overhaul. In this light, or in this climate right now, it just doesn't seem possible financially. So now that the, we've regrouped and thought, okay, so how can we kind of use the existing template, but make it much more usable? And I think we were thinking about, due to finance, it would have to be a phased-in approach. So I think we were just kind of fine-tuning how those phases would be. I really appreciate that Martha and Ramesh have been meeting with the principals to talk about the actual use of the space, because I know that's been one of my main concerns, is making sure that whatever we're doing is actually improving the experience for both schools. Because, you know, we have a lot of kids on one space, and we want to make sure, while we're improving it, we're improving it in ways that are actually improving the experience. So I think that's why it's taking a little longer.
I could just, from my, my own kids going through Central, the Central kids were not allowed even to play on the grass at all, ever. Never. They, they were 100% had to be on the parking lot.
Right, and that's, I think that's.
Even when it was nice weather, they couldn't be on the.
That's a goal, is that that grass space would be able to be used by both campuses on a regular basis, for PE and outdoor play.
Yeah, and I know if you're older than first grade, you don't, you play on blacktop every day, every day. And for any school from now on that will have that experience, I know my one daughter who's in high school now, that entered that grade just years and years on that blacktop, and they do get, they get creative, but there's only some.
Yeah, absolutely. That's why I think it kind of seemed like priority one is almost making sure that green space is usable, is designed in a way that it's usable year-round, so that the other port, you know, everything else can fall into place from that. But that was just from our preliminary conversation at the last meeting. So I think the goal originally was, we were hoping to be able to show you several designs and think about which, you know, and now it's like, I don't know if there are several designs to actually present, because we don't want to present a design that's going to be like, okay, and this is $12 million, and everybody says, we're not doing that, we're not doing anything. So I think the goal is to make sure we're, we're providing something in a cost-effective, like a financially feasible approach while meeting those priorities. So I don't think it's going to look like a, here's three designs, what do you think? I think it's going to more look like, here's what we can do, what do you think, you know?
And then, I think, if I remember correctly, this was the conversation, where they were going to come in and do a presentation in like September, and we just said, we're gonna, we can't, not, not top of mind right now, and, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're hoping to still do that.
So now it's kind of like going back to the drawing board and really just like, before they come back out and waste a bunch of their time, it's.
Yeah, because I think we were initially thinking of doing that presentation at the end of last year. And then when we reconvened in September, we were like, I don't think we can present this now, so, yeah.
And then also there's the additional complications, as we recognize with the improvements at Ames, that the village and the local stormwater agency. improvements at Ames, that the village and the local stormwater agency have significant impact on what gets done and when, and how much that costs. And so that is also, the experience with the front of Central has complicated things to...
Yeah, you don't know where you're going to find it, start thinking, right?
Yeah, and the drainage, I know I've heard of the significant issue.
It's, it's not even that. It's that the agency, the regulating agencies don't care so much about that. They're more interested in, did you follow their policies and their rules? And do your plans meet the letter of their law? And it's not so much the village, but the central district has a lot of power to say yes or no to anything that involves.
Oh yeah, if you take a look at the front of Central, you'll notice what's happening with that.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Then the next, next committee on the list is Finance.
Yeah, so we've got two topics to talk about. One is, at the end of the last, I think maybe the whole meeting, we talked about creating a document that would make the long-range facilities plan a living plan, so we would have sort of a good grasp of what projects have been done, which are still meant to be done, what the estimated cost was initially, what the sort of budgeted cost was, what the final cost was. So we can really keep tabs on things in a holistic way, rather than just seeing little bits and pieces here and there, which are hard done, they're hard to really understand. So Mr. Fitten has made a, an excellent sort of first draft of doing that, and he'll talk about that today, I guess. So I said, you want to explain what you've got here?
Thanks. I put a lot of detail in the report that you have in Board Book, and I've got a few slides to go through for long-range plan, and then the one you've been waiting for is the tax levy, so that's coming up. And, um, what, you got, tax levy, I just, I put them at the front of that. Thanks. The slides are also in your agenda, because they may be a little tough to read from here. So in, in your report, you'll find one page that recaps the whole long-range plan that we got February 2018. And then I included a breakout of just the capital projects, but where most of the money is. And then there's a list of projects that Ramesh has been involved with, and then I tried to, where, what we've been working on for the past year. And then tied that back to the original plan, so you can see how it all comes together. This one, it's, this, this might look like a slide of numbers from where you're at, but hopefully you can see the one on your computer. What I wanted to show here is the original long-range plan up at the top, it's in rows two to five, and that shows the breakout from capital in one column, column E, and the maintenance in column F, and then the total long-range plan. So when we received that plan from DLA, it had almost $28 million worth of large things, like the Ames addition, and very small things, like a room that needed to be painted. And then if, jumping down to the bottom, if you look at line 24 through 27, I've got the same thing. And, but that's as of November 4. So I just updated it as of today. And what I'll do a couple times a year is kind of update those lines and let you know where we are with capital, we'll add and we'll subtract what's been done, and, and keep a running total here. And on I have the detail that you see in the Excel sheet. So in between February 2018 up at the top and today, there's been, of course, some adjustments. And in the capital side, we spent on, on the projects that through Astara, that Ramesh is helping us manage, we spent about $20.1 million, and we've got projects that are in progress, about $3.7 million. And there were, over time, those projects really evolved from what was in the original plan. And what that list replaces was about $13.7 million of what was on the original plan. So even though we're looking to spend $23 million against original projects of $13 million, we, the scope of the projects expanded greatly over time, and we took our time making sure we could pay for it, and, and that's what we wanted. But column E, to just adjust what's in the long-range plan, I subtracted out the projects that are, are completed or are not going to be completed. For instance, there was a line item to fill in the, um, the courtyard at Central. Well, that, as, as things evolved, became, that wasn't the solution, there was other solutions. But I took that out because that won't be something that we do in the future. So if you start at the top of column E, there's $18 million in capital, take out 13.7 of the original projects. And then just recently, we added the Hollywood chimney, we're going to lower it down to three feet above the roof line. And that, that'll be almost $32,000. And in the plan, we originally had $4,800. So you go all the way down to the bottom of that column. So still outstanding from the long-range plan, we have about $4.5 million of capital projects in there. And that's the Central Hauser campus, any of the line items that added up to that. There's a line item for 21st Century Furniture at each school. So those are things that we want to plan for the future. Then I just did a similar exercise for the maintenance. And originally, there's 9.7 million. And we, the parking lot, we've kind of transferred it to the capital project, so I pulled it out of the maintenance. It wouldn't be something I go through school to, that kind of thing. And, um, there's, I kept track of some, all the little things that we did take care of, like, all the rooms that have been painted, all the ceiling tiles that have been replaced. And then I pulled the dollar amounts out for those kinds of things. So on the maintenance side, we completed $1.8 million of the smaller tasks. And we still have in that original, from that original plan, about $7.5 million. And we've been projecting $1 million a year to take care of those things and, and new ones that come up. So although this isn't exact, and we know something big can come up, like it did at Central, this is in the ballpark with how we've been projecting. Are there any questions on this?
I'm imagining, Jeff, you're going to highlight the difference between the, the original budget and what we ended up paying for that 13, the original proposed 13 million in projects, is quite staggering.
I think you speak the ball, and you have to. I think that, that was, you know, one of the reasons, I think, why this kind of approach is, is so useful, is because...
Can you speak, though? I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can, can you hear me? I don't know if this speaker's working or not. Can you hear me?
A little better, but...
Okay, I'll speak as loudly as I can. I think it's, one of the uses of this kind of approach that Mr. Fitten is taking is that it allows us to see things holistically, whereas if we're just looking at one-offs, you can't do the sum, you don't know what's happening. So I think it's really good that you're, you're taking this approach, because it gives us a big picture of that, exactly that kind of thing, Dan. I agree with that.
So I, I guess in terms of, maybe that's a presentation for a different time. So that's essentially scope creep or scope, scope increasing as opposed to just things turn out to be more expensive than was anticipated?
Uh, no, I'd say it's more, we were able to do more, two houses came up for sale that weren't part of the original plan. So I guess that's scope. But I think we solved a lot more problems district-wide than the original intention of those. And like Jeff says, it, it happens little by little, and that's why we wanted to take a, a look back at it in total. So I think, I don't think there was anything that cost necessarily more to do, but I think we were much more aggressive in what we tried to accomplish.
Is that the original 13 million that had been four years ago?
Yeah, oh, 2018, February 2018. So, yeah, that, a piece of it.
A lot of things changed four years ago. Houses moved to state.
I guess so. I don't think they were $10 million houses, though.
Any questions for Mr. Fitten here?
Any questions on this?
This is really, this is, this is very helpful, I agree. So thank you for proposing that, Jeff, because I was, you know, being, not having been involved in this for as long as everybody else, I was trying to wrap my head around that evolution of it. So this was very helpful. And it'll be good for the ongoing as well, just to keep that up to date. So thank you for doing that.
I'd also recommend, if you had a chance, that we could be attaching it to Mr. Fitten, couldn't put together along with this, that has the details of each project, and that's also very valuable, good information in there.
It was really helpful. Thank you for bringing that together.
So if there's no further questions, then I guess we can go on to the tax levy then.
I will say, I started to, I went back and started reviewing the long-range plan as we were having this conversation, and I'm just really appreciative that you have it all into a nice 16-page document as opposed to that. That, that document is so, like, so big. It's a little bit overbearing, so I really appreciate it, though.
Well, I put together the initial tax levy. We'll need to approve it and file it by the end of December. So I just, I want to share with you, from the budget that we approved in July, from our operating revenue, 86% of it comes from property taxes. So the levy is, is a large part of our revenue. I kind of tried to write some definitions, because we only, only get to look at this once a year. So the purpose of the levy and extension process is to convert the district's tax base into revenue. I seem to make a nice and simple definition for me to understand. And the levy is the, what we're putting together is what we request for revenue. And then the extension is what's approved by the Cook County Clerk. And so, for example, last year, we, we, we requested $26.282872, so $26.3 million. And then the clerk approved $26.2 million. And on this levy, we're looking to request $26.8 million. And then in June, we'll find out what the tax rate turns out to be from the county clerk. So in general, our, what we can ask for is limited by inflation or 5%, but it's almost always inflation, which has been under 5%. And this last slide is just the schedule of the tasks that we have to do to make sure the levy is filed and be completed properly. So then, in January, we got the CPI, which was 2.3%. And tonight, we'll get, get the conversation started with the first draft. And we have till the December 18 meeting to make changes to it. So we'll have a hearing on December 18, and then have the board approve it. And then it's due down, downtown, but now I can do it online. It's due December 29, the last Tuesday of December. Any questions on tax levy? And I'll just put updated reports on the next few board packets then.
Any other questions on the finance side? If not, I guess we go on to the next committee report.
Okay. David, do we have any updates from the Policy Committee at this meeting?
There is, one of the policies we approved is in the board site. My department will be bringing it up again. There's a question that we need to answer. I'll update it. So we'll be posted in the...
Okay. That shouldn't be too bad.
I can make a bet.
Sorry, I didn't realize that was a threat. All right. Then next, we will move to the Personnel Committee.
Nothing currently to report from the Personnel Committee. I did think of a comment, though, since we're not in the comment section, that after Angela's presentation, not to try to kickstart this conversation again, but I just, as I was kind of thinking about that and the previous conversation with all the COVID testing and everything, I mean, it was interesting putting those two things right next to each other, because I think the math component is the biggest concern that I'm hearing from people, and then to actually see it in the data. And I think just thinking back on all of the email, like a lot of those parents were talking about math. Nobody really said anything about reading, but just, it, it kind of hit, like, I think that's the tie-in right there, where the feeling in the community about getting put back into remote kind of ties in, because they felt it, and now we're seeing it. And I think that concern is just kind of like bubbling in his head right now. So just tie that together, something like that. I didn't want to interrupt Joel or like interject it in the middle of the rest of the committee meetings, so I hope my piece totally got to the end of it.
Okay. All right. So then we will move to old business, the first item listed, we've already acted on. So the second item listed is Jay Anderson Construction in Hollywood Chimney Repair. So, can anyone speak to, well, let's see, first, I suppose we should have a motion on that. Is there a motion that the board approved the contract with Jay Anderson Construction, Inc., to reduce the height of the chimney at Hollywood Elementary School as presented?
Someone moved. Second.
All right. Is there discussion?
I think the only discussion is simply that Ramesh had originally estimated, or had received an estimate from Burgland that was significantly higher than what we see in front of us here from Jay Anderson, probably about three times. Jeff, is that about right? And this, as Ramesh described, this is necessary work to reduce the height of a chimney that is suddenly showing some significant signs of decay and deterioration.
Do we, do we know when this work is planned to be done?
Uh, Ramesh sent an email recently, and Martha looked...
I was gonna say, Jim, Jim can probably comment on a few things.
Onto the site, Monday or Tuesday this week. So hopefully it can be done by the end of next week.
We gave general direction, I think, last week.
We did, yeah. We did. So no interruption in, in the school day, or no interruption in instruction time, stuff like that?
No, they've been given times when they can't be moving equipment around and...
All right. Is there any further discussion? All right. Kathy, can you call the rule?
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Muirhead?
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mrs. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. So the next item is future meeting dates. So the next meeting will be November 18, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the Central Multi-Purpose Room. Is that a true statement at this point? I know we had planned that and it didn't work out the last time.
I believe that they have reopened the handicapped entrance, but I will double-check on that. Where they will be reopening, like, November, some time for the meeting.
All right, definitely look forward to seeing that. So yes, in the Central Multi-Purpose Room, the board will enter into closed session at 6:30 PM if necessary, return to open session at 7:00 PM. We have a meeting on December 2, 2020, committee of the whole meeting in the Central Multi-Purpose Room. December 16 is a regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the Multi-Purpose Room at either Ames or Central, depending on how the November 18 meeting goes at Central. Ames or Central, depending on how the November 18th meeting goes at Central. All right, the board will enter into closed session at 6:30 PM if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00, and if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.